Good evening. We'll call this meeting to order for the April 25th, 2024, Apple Valley City Council meeting. As we jump into our meeting, anyone who has signed up to speak, well, when your time comes, we'll ask you to come to the podium and state your name and address the council. With that, the first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask everyone to rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item this evening is to approve the agenda, and Tom, do we have any changes?
Mr. Mayor and council, good evening. No changes to tonight's agenda.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move second.
Motion from Councilmember Grendel, a second from Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that item carries. Pardon me. The next item is our audience participation portion. We've got a total of 10 minutes for this item tonight, and Doug Cornelius has asked to speak. Doug, I'm gonna come on up.
Got my portable battery with my phone. So I'm Doug Cornelius. My wife Dawn and I own 13720 Hannibal Circle in Apple Valley. Love to talk about myself, so let me do an introduction. Now, quickly, I'm a national sales manager for an industrial door company out of North Carolina. My wife and I bought that home 26 years ago, and we own it. We don't have a mortgage. We own that home. And in 2007, she was voted daycare provider of the year for Dakota County. At that time, there were 934 in-home daycares. There are now 365. They're going away because of government regulation and lots of problems. In fact, tonight, she's working on opposing a bill that's being advanced by the DHS that wants to eliminate all in-home daycare centers. So you can choose to pay $200 a week for an in-home or 400 a week for a center. So anyway, the reason I'm here tonight is to talk about SR 1370. And yeah, we're all feeling a little better that maybe it's not gonna make it, but I don't think we should let up. And after your first meeting where I think Tom did the presentation, well, first of all, during that same meeting, there was a bunch of stuff that Ruth talked about that you just kind of brushed over, that is just amazing stuff. And as a citizen, I want to say congratulations with your work at the League of the Cities. And we have a vendor that makes canvas, and we have you and President Biden on canvas, who arrived today, but we're gonna have to give it to you tomorrow. But anyway, at that session, and we talked about 1370, I think the consensus was we needed to get out and talk to our state representatives and state senator. And that next day, I called Erin McQuaid and wanted to talk to her and get her position. Was that three weeks ago? I got a call back from her assistant yesterday, voicemail.
Really?
Saying, Doug, we're watching that bill closely, and if it doesn't turn out exactly the way I had hoped, I'm not sure I can support it. But just so you know, I totally agree with the goals of SR 1370. And if you look to the preamble of that legislation, it lays all the points that Tom made. And one of them says that it's somehow going to create affordable housing. There's no evidence. There's no evidence of that. And we all know what the negative impacts would be. And I think there was a resolution that night of the city council to be in opposition. But I guess, Erin, if you're watching, we'd sure like you to come here and explain to us what you see as the goals of that legislation and why you are in favor of it. Also, I think last meeting Bernie from the Legion, the commander, did a speech, and he says it's time to name names. And I've never knocked on doors for anyone in a political campaign, but I'm gonna this year because, as we talked about, this stuff didn't get just cooked up six weeks ago. This has been cooking for a long time, and it's gonna be back here next year. And we need to kill it now, and we need to kill it then. And one of the things we can do is get different state senator and a different representative if they're in favor of this. How can the city council unanimously be in favor of killing this bill, and yet we have these people over at the state voting for it? So I don't think I'll hear back from here for another three weeks, but I think she's avoiding the subject, and she's very in favor of it. And like I say, there seems to be some optimism that it's not gonna make it this time.
It's not gonna. It's dead.
But we're gonna be just as determined for the next 12 months as we have for the last few weeks. So that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Doug.
Doug, thank you. Thank you. As you said, we think this one is done for this session, but the session is not over. So we will keep an eye on it through the end.
It will be coming back.
Yeah, there will be conversations between now and next session to talk more about it. So Doug, thank you. We will move on to the consent agenda. These are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or a citizen wishes to pull an item. Council members, any items you would like to pull for consent? All right, seeing none. Citizens, any items to pull? With that, you have a motion for the consent agenda.
So move second.
Motion from Councilmember Bergman, a second from Councilmember Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That brings us to the regular agenda item, 5A, which is to proclaim April 21st through the 27th, 2024 as Volunteer Recognition Week in Apple Valley. And Pam is gonna walk us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, the city of Apple Valley is very fortunate to have many volunteers serve our city. This evening, we'd like to recognize our volunteer commissioners and committee members, as well as other volunteers who have contributed their time, talent, and energy to our community. The talents and skills of our volunteers have helped Apple Valley grow into the wonderful place it is in which to live and work. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite individuals in the listening audience who may be interested in volunteering to visit our website. When commissioner and committee member seats become vacant, they are always posted on our website. In conjunction with National Volunteer Week, staff recommends the city council proclaim April 21st through April 27th as Volunteer Recognition Week in honor and recognition of those who have and continue to serve the city of Apple Valley. The city has a policy to recognize volunteers serving on an advisory committee who have reached a recognized milestone in their service to the city. One individual should be recognized this evening for reaching a significant milestone. Committee member Wally Mulham served on the Urban Affairs Advisory Committee for 10 years, and Walter is present this evening, as well as many other members. There are two items before the city council this evening. First, to proclaim April 21st through April 27th, 2024 as Volunteer Recognition Week in Apple Valley, and then to present the Marble Apple Service Award to Mr. Mulham. And, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I would be happy to read that proclamation for you.
Please go ahead, Pam.
Whereas volunteers have enriched the life of our community through their concern, commitment, and generosity of spirit, and whereas the hard work and commitment of volunteers have made our community a better place in which to live, and whereas volunteers are a vital resource and have contributed to the health, education, welfare, recreation, culture, and environment of the city of Apple Valley, and whereas the city of Apple Valley wishes to thank its volunteers for their dedicated service and generous spirit. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota, in conjunction with National Volunteer Week, hereby proclaims the week of April 21st through April 27th, 2024 to be Volunteer Recognition Week in Apple Valley, and urges all citizens to recognize volunteers who contribute their time, talent, and energy to our community. Proclaim this 25th day of April 2024.
Do we have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So move. Second.
Motion from Councilmember Goodwin, a second from Councilmember Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Let's recognize Wally. I think that sounds like a great thing to do. And then we have a few other folks in the room I don't want to leave out as well. Wally, why don't you come on up? Try to face the front, maybe, so people can see us here. A couple of things for you. One is a copy of this proclamation, recognizing volunteer week, but specifically calling out your service and yours of service to Apple Valley. So we'll present that to you. See if Tom wants to. Tom's gonna get a picture or something there, I think. We'll make sure you can get one. I'm gonna fold this around so we have a little better shot. So thank you. Wally, exciting part, right?
Yeah. I did not expect this. That's beautiful.
It's nice. So the Urban Affairs Committee, right, the committee that maybe doesn't meet as much as ever, but boy, when we put you to work, we really put you to work.
We're the chicken people.
The chicken people, and all other things, right, that don't fit neatly in the bucket. And we really appreciate that work. The research you guys do when you dig in is definitely appreciated. It's deep, and it's useful, and it really helps us make better decisions. So thank you for that. I'll present that to you. Does Tom want to get a quick snap of that one? All right. And we warned you earlier, those are two pieces.
Yeah, I'll be careful.
So Wally, thank you. Thank you for your service.
Wally, don't forget about the garbage.
Yeah.
I said, don't forget about the garbage. Chicken garbage.
The chickens are a highlight, so we need to get all the good stuff. I wanted to just recognize a few other people we have here with us tonight. We don't, you know, we get to sit up here on camera and do all these kind of fun things, but a lot of the work happens behind the scenes and gives us good decisions to act on and good information to act on when we get it. And a lot of that work is done by our various committees, right, that volunteer their time, take the calls, take the hard conversations, give up their dinner hours, those kind of things, to come in and contribute to Apple Valley. So those who are in the room with us tonight, Wally, thank you again. Joel Engel, also on our Urban Affairs Committee, and Joel's spent plenty of time giving his time to the city over the years in various capacities. So in fact, I think I just saw you this week. So thank you. Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, a number of citizens, but we also lean on our staff for some expertise. And we have Matt Saum, who participates in that committee, as well as our deputy chief, Dahlstrom. So thank you, guys. For Cemetery Advisory Committee, we have a beautiful facility out at Lebanon Cemetery, and it's fantastic to see the work that goes on there. Alan Coles, our chair. Alan is in the back, in the back of the room. Alan, how many years have you been on Cemetery Advisory Committee?
18 years.
18 years. So thank you for those years of service. And Jen Monroe as well. So Jen, thank you.
Thank you.
Park and Rec Advisory Committee, Mark Scory. Mark is here somewhere. I saw Mark. I didn't see Mark. Well, there he is, hiding in the back. And Randy Bailey, our newest member of the Apple Valley Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. And our Planning Commission, Paul Scanlon, our vice chair, is here this evening, as well as Doug Haas, who we also just appointed here recently. So thank you for, you'll find out how much work it is, right? Thank you, guys, for joining. Join us quickly. And I think I've caught everybody who is on the list. So thank you all. Very much appreciate it. If you wanna stick around for 5B, we can see some of the work of the planning commission come up next. So I think that finishes up for 5A, Pam, unless I've missed something. Perfect.
That's it?
We'll move on to 5B, which is the Lushwab Tire Store at 15690 English Avenue. And Tim Benetti is going to come present this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Happy to present for you tonight the proposed site plan and building permit authorization request and conditional use permit from Lushwab Tire Center. This is at 15690 English Avenue. This, again, is authorizing a site and building plan for a 15,897 square foot auto accessory store with installation facilities. A conditional use permit per 155.157 sub D service base and accessory use for the installation of these accessories in conjunction with an auto accessory store. So there's two separate actions for you tonight. The site located at the northeast corner of 157th and English Avenue, just south of Mr. Carwash, west of Texas Roadhouse, north of Quarry Point Park. Property is currently situated in RB zone, retail business. Retail store is permitted to use. The conditional use allows for the auto accessory element that we're gonna get into very quickly. This is a legal plot of record or lot of record, Lot 2, Block 1 of Orchard Place 2. Highlighted here in the red outline is the borders of the parcel or lot. What you're seeing on the left or the right-hand side of this image is a yellow image or yellow overlay of the drainage and utilities meant. No part of the building can go over this, and you're gonna see how that fits very nicely here under this site plan. So we're talking 2.72 acres of land. They're situated in the building as, I'll use the mouse here, so people can see that. Maybe not. Light blue image with the building further in the south, parking on the north, and sidewalks all the way around. Also highlight here, thank you. Why turn that on? So here, on the right-hand side, we've also included that lane restrictor that my report indicated was necessary as part of to prevent those traffic from coming down along that little private road section from exiting out that entryway that is only supposed to be a right-in at this point here. And this lane restrictor will help hopefully prevent those vehicles from traveling down here any farther with some signage as well. So that's all part of this proposed plan layout. Utility plan, nothing to show here other than all the storm sewers, all the utilities are available to the site. Grading plan, site is fairly level, graded at this point. Don't anticipate very much changes with the new parking and new building. Our landscape plan, again, as reported indicated, we take pride in our landscaping in this site. We ask for the developer or applicant to provide for some landscaping on that south side, and also on this big beefy islands that they're proposing here. We think they've done a wonderful job with those. They've also been reviewed by our natural resources for some varieties and species, and they've done a great mixture of those as well. Our floor plan, very basic. You're looking at a lobby area along the east side of the building with the bays along inside. Only one way in, one way out, which is the two-bay opening. I wanna get to this image real quick here. This was the original image that was presented back in February. And as you can see, looks pretty basic, pretty plain, pretty utilitarian. These are tip-up wall panels, concrete with very limited color schemes. Our planning commission reviewed this back in February and said, ah, this really isn't quite up to snuff. So they came back with this very well, we think, a very well-designed building. Again, you're looking at, just for real quick, flat roof to the articulated roof, the overhangs, the CMU buildings, or block features, the ledgestone, stone veneer for the waist coating, overhangs, the eyebrow features over the windows. So this, these are full windows, actually, because this is all part of the service bay areas. They didn't want to put windows in those areas because of the heavy tires being shifted around. So these are just full windows with nice eyebrow features. Again, one way in, one way out. This is on the west side. And again, our trash enclosure meets all the requirements. Here is the color panels or bill material palette. Again, there's a woodgrain copper material, which we think will be a very attractive, very nice mix of materials and color schemes. So again, on February 7th, PC did give initial consideration of this project on our public hearing. We did receive some comments, nothing from the public. They closed the hearing, directed the applicant to provide an updated site plan. On April 3rd, they brought that updated site plan that we just reviewed and unanimously recommended by a 6-0 vote to approve that site plan and CUP for this development. For tonight, we're asking you to adopt that resolution approving the site plan and building permit for the 15,897 square foot retail auto accessory store, and also the CUP for the auto accessory, the service base as an accessory use. The applicant's representatives here tonight, if you have any questions for them. Otherwise, I'll stand for any questions from the council.
Councilmember Bergman.
Thanks, Mayor. Tim, the question I have, and I think it's come a long ways. I saw the initial, which you showed up there with the white. Now, this plan that they showed today for us, is that now the norm for this corporation for other cities? Or are they gonna stay, are we unique, and we get this nice plan, and they keep their same as what they had for other cities out there?
I'll probably defer that to the applicant, but when I did my research on the Lushwab, this is a new store for me as well. Most of us don't hear about this.
Right.
They're based out of Bend, Oregon, I believe. And so they're a west coast company. They slowly are making their way towards the Midwest, Dakotas right now, Minnesota as well. Their stores, you can see the progression from the older stores to the Utah, Colorado stores. They did some nice stores. We think this is probably a nice fit. They were, I think this is a unique design for Apple Valley because they're limited to the two-bay openings, which they were not really subject to in other communities. So this design is very unique to Apple Valley. We think this would probably be one of the few that they're gonna see in the nation, just for us.
That's very nice.
And that's how committed they were to be in here.
Any other questions for Tim? If not, we have two actions in front of us. The first is to adopt a resolution approving the site plan and building permit authorization for the 15,987 square foot retail auto accessory and service center store. That was a lot of words.
So move second.
With motion from Councilmember Grendel, a second from Councilmember Bergman. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item is approved. Second item is to adopt a resolution approving the conditional use permit to allow service bays as an accessory use in conjunction with an auto accessory store in the RB zone.
So move.
A motion from Councilmember Goodwin, a second from Councilmember Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries. We do have the applicant here. If you'd like to say any words or tell us anything about the business plant opening, construction schedule, floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Mark Rowe. I'm with KLG Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Lushwab Tires. And besides asking questions, I'd just like to express to you that Lushwab Tires is really excited about opening their building and become a member, an active business member here in Apple Valley. Just a kind of brief history of Lushwab Tires. They were formed in 19, early 1950s. They got, they have over 8,500 employees currently, 10 states, mostly in the western United States. But as Tim mentioned, they're moving eastward into northern South Dakota and Minnesota. Tim nailed it on the issue about the uniqueness of this building because of the fact that only two bay doors were allowed out of the building. But I'd like to compliment Tim and his team. Excellent job working with us to get us to this point. It's been a great experience getting that building to what hopefully will be a nice building here in the Apple Valley area. The business is generally open from Monday through Saturday, 8:00 to 6:00 p.m. They're off on Sundays. And they are, as I mentioned, become a member of the community. They donate their time. They donate money. They have an annual toy drive and food drive. They try to become an active member within the community that they're in.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thanks for working with the staff to get us a building that will fit nicely in that neighborhood. So Tim, anything else on this one?
No, sir. Just welcome to Lushwab and as all new businesses to the community. We're happy to have them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Before we move on to the next item, while we're talking here about a commercial building in a commercial zone, I think there's a parallel to what Doug talked about earlier in the beginning of the meeting, right? We have local control to kind of make these decisions, get us a better quality building, something that fits nicely in the development. And we not had that, right? And I know we put you guys through a little extra to get there. However, I think it's better for everybody when we have that. The next one that comes along will protect the investment you guys make because we can do that. The bills like Doug was talking about fully strip out our ability to have that local control, and that's some of those pieces that we risk losing every time we inch away from that. So that's why it's important and why we spend so much time talking about those housing bills that came through. With that, we will move on to item 5C, which is, Ron is gonna update us on our capital improvements plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The, I wouldn't say any updates other than a couple minor tweaks to it that I'll point out as we go. This is very similar to the presentation we had at the Council Informal just two weeks ago. I did strip that down. The city council has seen everything in here. So this would be, I guess, in my opinion, the, some of the items that may be of more interest to the public. And we'll go through this at a very high level, but hopefully the public finds some items of interest in here. What is the, what is the capital improvements program, or we refer to it as the CIP? It's a planning document that we use to try and identify significant capital outlays in the next five, and in some cases, up to 10 years. Tries to anticipate those capital needs. Again, it is a planning document. It's not a budget. There's, any actions that the city council is taking is not an authorization to expend funds, or rather, to start planning for each of the projects that are in here. And the actual authorization will occur through city council action, either through the adoption of the annual budget, or if it's a project that isn't included in the budget, it would come forward as individual approval for that project or that purchase, which is how it has always been. So there's nothing new with that process either. And we take this capital improvements program, and we'll integrate it into the budget process, which we will be starting next week, actually, as we turn the departments loose on the budget requests for the coming year. This becomes a basis to help formulate some of their budget requests, particularly as it relates to some of the capital items. And it's the annual budget that provides the funding for those identified projects. The cap total over the next five years totals 279 million. We see that 120, close to 120 million is just building and facility improvements. We do have the ongoing street and utility infrastructure program. That's approximately 97 million. And then we have parks and playgrounds passed and open space this year. It's 24.7 million. The building improvements in parks, parks, playgrounds and open spaces are much higher this year. And that is, as the city council is aware, and mainly the, also, I would suggest the public is aware, there was a parks referendum. And if we look at that, these are the sources of funds for all those projects, 279 million. Again, 31 million over the next five years would come from the general fund. This would be, I would suggest, the property tax levy support of these projects is included in that line. We also have the VERF charges to the operating funds. We have monies coming from the Future Capital Projects Fund. And then I mentioned the two bond issues, one related to the parks referendum for 73 million. And then there's other projects related to the facilities capital improvement program that would include the, in this case, finishing of the fire station number two, the building of the police operations facility along Flagstaff, as well as the central maintenance facility improvements out there. We, a significant portion of the budget is related to the infrastructure replacement program, of which the utility funds make up a significant piece of that. So 51 million over the next five years, as well as municipal state aid, which can only be spent on roadways within the state aid system. So again, total of 279 million of sources and uses. And bond-related is 127 million. That would leave the remainder of 152 million. And I would suggest that's our, kind of our normal. And I would suggest that's our, kind of our normal CIP. And if, in fact, if you strip that out and you look at this breakdown, again, the street and utility infrastructure program, 97 million. We go back and look at prior capital improvements programs. This is similar to what we've been seeing in, in previous years. Mentioned the facility capital improvement program bonds. They are funding, as I mentioned, the fire station, police facility, the CMF facility, just some brief visuals of, of those projects. I mentioned the park referendum bonds. They totaled 73 million over the next five years. They'll be funded again with bond issues over the next three to four years. They have the Hayes, Hayes Arena, 2.7 million. The improvements out at the aquatic center for 8 million. We've got the Redwood Community Pool being replaced, as well as master plan and a whole redevelopment of the Redwood Park. We've got youth baseball and softball complex over at Hayes for 5.2 million. Improvements at Kelly Park for 8 million. Improvements at the senior center and Apple Valley Community Center. We have general park improvements, which would include trails, natural resource, removing invasive species, replacing of the playgrounds and play surfaces, additions of pickleball courts, skate parks, et cetera, and a sign replacement program. And again, I, all of these ideas and, and project are, were improved in the voter-approved referendum last fall. And park staff is now meeting with, with consultants in developing the plans and they'll involve public input in developing those plans in the near future. The utility funds, I mentioned, significant portion of that. We can see, this chart just shows the expenditures over the next, anticipated out 10 years. And we can see that there's a spike in 2026 in capital outlay, presented in this graph. That is related to, in 2026, the Apple Valley, here it's identified as phase one of the Apple Valley neighborhoods, additions, replacement of the street and infrastructure program. And the large cost in 2026 is the city's share of, city cost of replacing the trunks along the County Road 42 frontage roads. That's a significant project that has to be done initially or on the front end to accommodate future phasing. In addition to that, in Greenleaf, fourth addition, there'll be a phase starting this year, as well as Whitney Drive from Garden View down to Redwood and a booster station rehab. And again, the Apple Valley additions will, we have a separate graphic just for that. And then in 26, Jermaine Avenue from 134th, Jermaine Avenue out to 134th Street, as well as 127th Street. On the stormwater side of things, again, the infrastructure replacement program includes not only the streets, includes the water and the sanitary and the stormwater system as it relates to all of those project areas will be heading into some significant improvements in the next five years. Again, Whitney Pond Expansion, staff is currently working on that in conjunction with getting state grants to cover many pieces of that project. We do have stormwater pond improvement coming along at this site here at the municipal center in 2025. In 26, just continuing on in the infrastructure and street and infrastructure replacement program. Do you want to point out, I think Brandon has been talking over the past few years about needing to get in and start planning for a leased trail? And that is coming up on the horizon out there. So some portions of the utilities would start in 2027, as well as Quarry Point Park, some improvements down there related to stormwater. Mentioned the pavement and infrastructure replacement program. We call, sometimes we call it the road fund. It includes not only the street projects, but it'll also include the utilities, water, sewer, stormwater. This just breaks down the sources of all those ongoing. 84.4 million over the next five years has been identified in this CIP related to the infrastructure replacement program. And again, the tax levy support of that, which is the early slide where it showed transfers from the general fund of 23.5 million over the next five years. Some of the larger projects included there, we, we covered a lot of these, but 147th and Glacier intersection improvements in the next couple of years, Whitney Drive I mentioned, Greenleaf, fourth addition. The start in 2025 is the bigger piece of the Apple Valley additions. They start with the trunks at a little over 5 million in total for the street piece. Some of the larger costs, I guess, overlays is 127th Street, again, Cedar to Galaxy, and then a redo of the resurfacing of the Central Village area in 2025. Just a visual of, if anybody wants to see where their neighborhood is out in the next five years, there's, this is the streets that'll be receiving utility reconstruction or millon overlay. We also have a preservation program that'll treat 21.4 million over the, or miles over the next five years. This is just an image of what, where these areas would be. And again, the idea with this is these are newer streets that are due for the micro surf surface treatment. That'll extend the life of them so that they won't be needing to be reconstructed hopefully as soon as if they receive no reservation treatments. Mentioned the Apple Valley additions. This is one of the larger redevelopment or reconstruction areas, streets and utilities. It will have a significant impact to residents. It's a 12-year construction. I mentioned this is a planning document where Brandon and Matt and staff are working at trying to, one, identify funding sources to help with some of the costs, but also fine tuning some of the costs. And they're thinking that this can be shortened up in the neighborhood of 10 to 12 years. But again, this is all a planning document and they will start working at developing all the details of this. There'll be 73 million spent over the next 12 years. Utilities share of that that we just saw will, will necessitate issuing some bonds in 2026 and 2027, approximately 11 million over the, those two years. And again, I mentioned they're seeking grants for stormwater, which they are generally fairly successful in gaining the state's attention in, in those areas. Again, just a visual of how some, some of the timing works out on that. And again, 2026 is the big peak year where they're redoing the trunks along County Road 42. So in total, again, 71 million over the next 10 to 12 years. A visual of kind of this is kind of a phasing plan. And this is, I mentioned, one of the changes is this is a new, a new phasing plan that was just shared with me a little bit over an hour ago. So I slid that in here. And the reason I did that is Brandon and Matt are postponing one area to move in another area so that they can pursue more grant options on the, frankly, it'd be the Green Park area, I think, is where they're concentrating on trying to get that. So the first neighborhood will be down along Porter, Porter Lane, down in the southwest quadrant, and then they'll shift up to County Road 42 along the frontage roads. And then the other phases will be, will be done following that. Again, I mentioned, we, we have the park facility, the capital improvement facilities, capital improvement plan that contemplated issuing bonds over the next five years. And we also have the park referendum that voters approved last fall. So it'd be 73 million that was approved. We look at the, just the, the impact on a monthly basis to the median value home. We issued the debt in 2024. The levy and the payment of that would start in 2025 and each year successive after that. So the first year would be approximately $6.93 per month on the median value home for both of those issues together. And we will need to manage the issuance of the timing of these issuances so we can manage it around our, our debt policy. In summary, the staff are again seeking grants to offset the capital costs for road and utility, stormwater. The capital improvement bond piece of that is assumed at the facilities bonds, assumed at the maximum. And then, as I mentioned, we'll have to manage the issuance of those to stay within an average 10-year principal repayment schedule, which we'll be able to do that, I believe, with, with the projects that have been identified so far. One of the assumptions in there is the electric and gas franchise would be extended. So that, this capital improvement plan generates $1 million that would go into the infrastructure replacement fund to pay the street costs going forward. And if, we mentioned the significant capital projects within the utilities. The sanitary sewer rates would increase 10% in 2025 and 5% thereafter. Water assumes a 5% rate increase going forward. And stormwater is assuming a 10% increase, which has been the, the percentage increase in stormwater the last few years. And again, I mentioned 11 million dollars worth of bonds that would be needed to be issued for the utilities. So with that, we ask for the action. Again, this is just a planning document, but I ask the, for adoption of a resolution approving the 24, 2024 through 2028 capital improvements program.
Thank you, Ron. Questions? Council member Grendal.
Thank you. Obviously, we've spent a long time going through this.
Yeah, I always make that point too, right? This is the first time I've run through this.
But Ron, so we're one of nine cities with two AAA bond ratings in the state?
That's correct.
One of, I mean, so obviously this helps lower costs when we're going out for bonds. And so that's one of our, what we strive for up here, one of our goals every year is to maintain our two AAA bond ratings. So we'll continue with that and hopefully can lower some of the costs.
Yeah, the bond rating, AAA bond rating gets us the lowest possible cost for borrowing.
I think that, you don't have to bring it back up, Ron, but I think that picture you had of the Whitney Drive, north of Whitney improvements there, right? That's an awful lot of original Apple Valley that we're talking about the, the next few years, right? It's, it's hitting that age at 60-ish years. It's just plain worn out and so.
It happens.
Yeah, that, as Brandon and Matt have been sharing for years, that area has been in need of reconstruction for a number of years and it's.
And not built to the standards we would build something today with stormwater and the likes. So there's a little correcting of conditions.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Will be impactful to that neighborhood though, and that phasing hopefully will help reduce that a little bit. So, other questions for Ron? If not, we would take a motion to approve the, to adopt your resolution, excuse me, approving the 2024 to 2028 capital improvements program.
So move.
Second.
Motion from council member Bergman, a second from council member Goodwin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries. We'll move on to staff and council communications. Tom, do you have any items other than the one sitting in front of me?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one other one before we get into that one. And that's just a reminder that the annual state of the city address is coming up and that will be coming up on May the 8th. It's going to be held at Valley Wood Golf Course. This event is prepared and sponsored by the Apple Valley Chamber of Commerce. So all the registration to attend is through the Chamber of Commerce website. But we certainly are excited about the program. The mayor will certainly be the lead presenter. We'll have multiple videos from our department head staff giving the highlights of 2023 and some plans for 2024. And if you're not able to make that date, it will be videotaped and will be replayed on the city's website and also on the government channel for a long time to come. So.
It'll be out on YouTube too, last I knew. So, we'll get it out there. Thank you. The other one I just wanted to mention is, I think it was about a week ago today that Tim Bonetti, myself, Alex and Eve were at the Real Estate Journal Awards. We were city of the year last year. We were a finalist again this year. I have a plaque, I have an, we can put the plaque up front maybe if we want to, if you want to put it on the camera so people can see it. When you get ready for those, right? And I saw a little of, as Tim was getting ready for state of the city stuff as well. An awful lot goes into something like this and the number of ribbon cuttings, new projects, new things coming up in town is, has been pretty phenomenal. And so it's nice to have that recognized again, even as a finalist. We had a number of projects in Apple Valley recognized as well. I will miss some, but Munson Barley's was a finalist on there, Times Square, Wings remodel. What other big ones am I missing? I, I didn't, the packet's still in the car, so.
I think you got them all.
Yeah. Along with just a number of developers who maybe are doing the other things around, around the Twin Cities area, but we have seen in town, Roars took a number of awards home as well, and they did Riser here. So kind of fun to see that success and a lot of South Metro well represented. Our neighbor Rosemont took home the city of the year award and very well deserved. And their mayor was also kind enough to recognize that they don't do this alone either and that part of their success is the success of the neighboring cities. So fun award to be at, a long evening of awards, no doubt about that. But again, thanks to everybody here who put time into making this possible to be a finalist again this year.
Did you say we won it last year?
We did win it last year.
We won it last year.
Yeah, we, we got a nice trophy this year.
I never thought we'd get it two years in a row, but you never know.
I didn't either, but you, you still show up.
You still show up.
You still show up, right?
We have a lot of big projects down here that.
We do, we do, and a lot of good stuff. And doing stuff like the Les Schwab deal we did, I think helps you get there, right? When you put a good project in the ground. So with that, anything else, Tom? In council, anything? All right, quiet group this evening. Our next item is our calendar of upcoming events. The next informal city council meeting is Thursday, May 9th at 5:30 PM. And our next regular council meeting is Thursday, May 9th at 7:00 PM. I know when we showed up, 5:30 in the morning. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar of upcoming events?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion from council member Goodwin, a second from council member Bergman. All those in favor? But you have some things?
No, I'm just.
After, okay.
Under council communications, I just had something I should have mentioned.
So we'll take a vote quick on the calendar, then we'll come back to you. All in favor of approving the calendar indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, Ruth, go ahead.
Thank you. So I was invited to the League of Minnesota Cities Board of Directors last week to talk about being the chair of the Energy, Environment and Natural Resources Committee of the National League of Cities. And I just thought I should, Dan Keely as transportation chair, and I were, we were invited to speak to them and tell them how we got to where we were.
Ruth, thanks for, thanks for doing that. Thanks for mentioning it. I think the, and you guys have been here longer than I have. But in the, you know, 12 or 14 years I've been up here, the time the council has spent on those kind of things, right? Whether it's stuff at the legislature, connected with other cities, has certainly grown and it's good to be connected in there. And I think that helps us with, with many things, including dollars coming to the city to do other things. So thank you, Ruth, for doing that and taking the time. I know it's time away from other things. If there are no other items, we would take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion from council member Grendal, a second from council member Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, thanks, everybody. Have a great evening.